...City Schools November 8th Committee Meeting, President and all Board members. Superintendent Modio and...
Mr. DeBbie.
Mr. DeBbie, the pledge. Dr. Leetons.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Modio and Dr. Leetons.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started on the agenda, starting with letter A, Community Conversion School. Debbie's taken over a big part of kind of being the go-to person in the Board Office for me, and so she's going to be giving the Community Conversion School updates from this point on, so Deborah Lynn, if you would go ahead.
Thanks, too. Kevin and I were pretty successful with getting remediation materials and also teachers involved in helping. We had four students that needed OGT testing this fall. All four of them actually completed their testing. We won't know until some time right before Christmas break, hopefully, that they passed. If not, we still have two more attempts. We have a spring attempt and then a summer attempt. And if they're not successful, I know one student, for instance, she has four tests that she needs to pass out of the five. And more than likely, unless we can really get her ramped up, what will happen is if she doesn't pass spring or actually summer, she actually then kicks into our end-of-year exams. So what used to be her fiscal year of 2013, those are the last students entering as a freshman that are still responsible for taking OGT. Then we move on to end-of-year exams. So she will no longer, you know, OGT will be an option. And what we really want is for her to be able to pass those. End-of-year exams are much more difficult. So, like I said, so we had four students that are attempted, and again, we'll see where we're at, obviously get the more remediation for spring, and then, you know, desperate push, you know, towards summer. We have 31 students currently enrolled, and Kevin and I, right now, we're actively pursuing at least four more students. We're trying to get our numbers up to 35, 36, and then by next year, hopefully, even moving closer to 40. You know, we have plenty of room, plenty of options. With the kids coming in at different times, it makes it, it's not feasible for Kevin to be able to work with them. And then with me coming in to do all the testing, I'm the one that's responsible for the testing in the spring. So that way, he doesn't have to shut down, you know, the conversion school for a day so that he can test certain students for different things. So I take over all the testing while he can still basically teach for that day. That's where we're at. Trying to think if there's anything else that I can tell you as of now, unless you have any questions.
Any questions? You know, what could be interesting the next year is with the future E-COT being a little tenuous right now, what could be interesting is how that then affects us. Now, we can be selective in who we allow. You just cannot just say, "I'm coming with Norwood Converses." But it'll be interesting, because their future and their funding is, could end up in the House Supreme Court, but it looks like it's heading that way. So be interesting how it, the fallout, because of our similarity, except we're on site. And so, see how that affects us. Could be, you know, next 12, 16 months down the road, something that might have an impact where we have a little bit more interest from those who are E-Cotters coming towards us, so we'll have to see. Okay, facilities master plan. Well, hopefully, we get real busy tomorrow. Basically, what'll happen is upon successful passes of the bond issued tonight, I'll be making a call as soon as I walk into my office tomorrow to Steve Hemminger Paul, and we get real busy writing up specs. Plan will be is that late January, probably the February Board meeting, I would bring to the Board, maybe the January, the approval to advertise for bids for all of the security work for the summer. And so then we have to advertise for two successive weeks, and you have a bid opening, and then the following Board meeting, bring the winning bidders to us. And earlier we can go out, the better, because a lot of your contractors, in January, February, they don't have their jobs for the summer and their labor lined up, so they're really hungry, real competitive. Later into the winter, into the early spring you go, they start getting their summer jobs full, and they're not as hungry for the work. And so, earlier the better. They're already working on it, but it'll kick into real high gear, hopefully about 8:15 tomorrow morning. And I appreciate all the help that our staff, our staff really turned out en masse to help with the two door hanger drops. We have 200 signs spread out across the city. We have door hanger drops, the first one was really given a broad, really our three bullet points of what we were pursuing, and then the one that we did on Friday, listed in detail everything that we were doing, had a decent amount of traffic on the email site, people seeking more information. Been some interesting communication on several different Facebook sites, but on the Vote for Norwood City Schools Facebook site, everything's been real positive. So we will know in about, probably five hours. And so, win, lose, or draw, a lot of people put in good effort, and, you know, you never know, did you run a good campaign? We'll know in about five hours, but I think it was an effective and efficient campaign. And we'll take it from there here in a couple of hours, hopefully. Any questions on the facility master plan? What I can tell you guys is, we win tonight, get ready to live it, because it's going to be a, I mean, that facility master plan item on committee, that could be a half hour starting January of what we're doing. This is going to be a monster for three years. Maybe bring in some personnel, thoughts and recommendations moving forward, too, because this is a monster, 41.5 million in about three and a half years. So we got sunup to sundown in the summer, and from four to midnight, probably six days a week during the school year. So, and it's going to be fun, it's going to help our kids, so I'm hoping that come January, or actually December Committee, have a heck of an update, and then, this will be a big part of every committee meeting for about three years, three and a half years. So it's a good thing to talk about. Okay, school calendar. This was in all the big attachments that was sent out. I don't know if you guys took a second to look at the school calendar. I can make some more copies for you. Did you go make some copies for us?
I don't need it.
You don't?
Five copies. Basically, well Debbie runs those. The school calendar process is not like learning Latin or Chinese arithmetic. It is, I think we have a good template that works now. You know, we have a standard spring break, week that April 1st falls in, and really what you do when you put the calendar together is you put in all your federal holidays, you look at what's going to work for Christmas break, and you have four quarters, and two of them have to have 45 days, two of them have to have 44 days. And so, right now, everything kind of falls within a day or two of where we've been these last couple of years. We did choose, you have a little play in the week that April 1st falls in, when it falls on a weekend. So April 1st is a Sunday next year, and is also Easter, and so what I'm recommending, as you'll see, is that we take off the week preceding the Easter, come back to school the next day, because we have testing two weeks later. And so, that is the big reason, if you go back seven years, that we wanted to go with the standard spring break, because when you go around Easter, you can really get into some conflicts when it comes to bringing our kids back to school, right into testing or with only a week before. So enable, it'll enable us to have two full weeks of school prior to testing. Learned my lesson a couple of years ago by bringing us back to school on January 2nd. Everybody thought the lesson that I learned is that Ohio State happened to play in the Gator Bowl that afternoon, and the Boston didn't get to watch it, but what it was is they had 63% attendance that day. That was the lesson I learned. So I'm bringing us back January 3rd. We are looking at, you know how we do two waiver days? Those count as school days, okay? Looking at doing a third and doing away with the early releases for next year. Spent a lot of time talking to our teachers. And while a lot of people feel there's some value in that early release, what our folks who really take it serious say, "Rob, we just get going and it's over." And some staff will keep going, but then if somebody says, "I gotta pick up my son." "I'm a coach," or "I got a dentist appointment," whatever, we lose our initiative. And our waiver days are really, really strong, and it's all-day work, so we're probably be bringing to you guys, we normally do it in February, March, instead of a handful of half-dozen, hour-and-a-half releases, doing a third waiver day. So there'd be one first week in October, there'd be one like last week in January, and then typically doing another one sometime in mid to late March, right as we're hitting our stride right before testing, so. But I can just walk you through this. Basically, what we will be doing is mimicking the same format of doing a Friday, Monday for our teacher-in services, Friday being the day that administration owns, Monday being the day the teachers own. I like to have that day where there's no, it's hands-off our staff, no meetings, because that's the day before they get kids. Like, we're still getting tons of additions to class lists. I need them to have that day where we're not taking up their time. Starting school on Tuesday, and Tuesday, August 22nd, and we did this same thing this year. I looked at going on Monday, Tuesday, for the two teacher workdays, but then that would have brought us back to school one day after Memorial Day, which would have had about 1% attendance. And so, like at the high school, it would have been exam makeups. No reason to come in. So, just kind of follow along, got Veterans Day. One thing I always brag about to people is in Norwood City Schools, we, the day off school is Veterans Day. We're not the district that takes a Monday or Friday off to get a nice convenient three-day weekend. But for the next two years, Veterans Day will be on Saturday and Sunday. So with it being on Saturday, we'll take off Friday. Another year out, with it being on Sunday, we'll take off Monday. Then we'll get back to what we traditionally do. Being an old history teacher, you recognize Veterans Day on Veterans Day. Not, it's not just, "Let's take a day off." There's a purpose to it. Come on, history teacher. 11th day, 11th month?
11th hour.
11th hour. 1918. In a train car in Paris, which is where Hitler made them sign their surrender papers in '43, the French, not us. So Thanksgiving are typical three days. What I did for Christmas break, guys, is Christmas is a Monday, so I have our first day off school being Friday, then come back on January 3rd. And we got a Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, spring break, as I said, coming back the day after Easter, and Friday, the 25th, which, right, you know, I'm not always going to be able to box this into where the end of the school year is, the end of the day on Friday leading up to Labor Day, but it's worked pretty well the last couple of years, I can tell you, from being in this for 29 years. When you come back after Memorial Day, it's tough sledding. Not as much with your high school kids, because you still got finals hanging over them. Both younger kids, it's real tough sledding. And hopefully, we'll have an option here in a couple of years of, we're not going to be driven by the heat. It's not going to impact us making our calendar. You know, there are some districts who have air conditioning, who started real early this year, but as I've peeled that back, my first thought was, hmm, must be trying to get as many days in before testing as possible, but then they get out like the same time we do. So what I discovered was, by looking at my stepson's calendar, some schools are going to a four-day fall break. Tyson's off Thursday, Friday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Monday. I'm not too interested in a fall break, unless the majority of the Board is, it's not something I'm good at entertaining there. I don't think we have a lot of fams who just punch out and go on vacation in the middle of October. That's why the Lakotas, the Masons, the Springbournes were starting like August 8th. I thought it was, okay, well, we can't do this, but it must be trying to get as many days in before testing. Then I'm looking at their ending time, and I'm like, "They're getting out the same time as we are." And so, when I came home one day, and Debbie's like, "Hey, Tyson doesn't have school for a week," you know, I'm like, "Huh? It's October. He needs to come work here, clean the office or something." So, and then I still put in the Inclamant Weather Days, we'll always adopt those, even though, guys, we are about 200 and some hours over the state minimum we have in our teacher's contract. Once we get to day six, it has to be made up. If you remember last year, we had six days, and we said, "We're going to forgive that one day." But a couple of years ago, we had to make up, we still brought them in for a day. Why I always put that in there is, one, it's in the teacher's contract; and, second, it's in there to make sure that, don't be so confident that we won't have makeup days, and don't go out scheduling vacation for these days. Just got to handle like the old days. And since we, you know, I think are pretty cautious with our kids when it comes to weather, we may be in that. Even if we don't get a snowy winter, it may be a really cold winter, so you never know.
Or a flood.
Or a flood, yep. Even a town with no creeks in it, we had a flood. So, so this will be on the agenda, again, 178 days of instruction, three teacher-in-service days, two parent-teacher conferences, 183 teacher-contract days. And so, that'll be the calendar I have on the agenda for next week.
Do we know graduation is going to be in for this senior year?
Brad waits until I get this approved. So basically, what I do is I'll text Brad on my way home tonight, tell him the last day of school, and then he schedules it.
For 2017?
Oh, for this, for this spring?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's on the calendar. I'll have to look. I think it's on that colored calendar.
Okay. I'll get one.
Yeah.
See if I can hold on.
Yeah. You're kind of a 12-month employee, starts, stops, don't mean anything. I don't, some of those dates don't stick in my brain, so, yeah, it's on our school calendar.
Yeah.
Yeah. So this will be on the agenda for next week. Okay, I'll go ahead and work down through the calendar. Oh, excuse me, no, I'm not. Got another item, under discussion items. Last one is student code of conduct. So, what, that's kind of code a little bit, because I didn't want to put exactly what it is. Had some discussions with Terry and with Sarah, based on my emails that I, when we have a situation where we have a student where we, Clancy specifically, because it's pretty well-known, because people see Clancy stop, stalk a kid, or stalk a locker, and so I always want to, you know, share with you guys when we have basically a drug bust. And we don't have many, we don't have much, which is part of the reason why we have Clancy, because my whole goal is, we can affect what's going on in the community, but I don't want that stuff in our schools. And the best way to keep it out of schools is have a narcotics dog. And so, questions that come up, we had some little bit email traffic from me and Terry and Sarah about, because you always see on the, I'm saying, they're getting suspended for 10 days, they're going to get expelled. So I'm going to give you guys some data, so you can just see how many kids we actually have involved in possession or under the influence, in a year going back to 13, 14. And then, kind of let you know what all of what we do beside the discipline, but we also have some resources, and the discipline isn't always exactly the same. So just to give you guys just some idea here, if you go back to 13, 14, we had nine kids that were expelled for either possession or under the influence. In 14, 15, we had two. 15, 16, we had six. And this year so far, we've had three. Once I'm notified that we have somebody who, anytime somebody's going to be suspended for 10 days, recommended for expulsion, before they pull the trigger on that, they contact me, the administration does. Not for every single suspension, but for any time it's going to be what we call 10 rec, they contact me. And so, then at that point, the process begins, and I start to gather, or Terry will gather for me, or Kelly, a lot of background information on the kiddo, so I can start to study him a little bit, leading up to the expulsion hearing. And so, what I had Terry do is pull some information for me, and going back to everybody since 13, 14, that has been in my office for an expulsion hearing for a drug or alcohol offense. First thing I'm going to tell you, whether I expel you or not, we immediately tie you and your family into, we have a drug and alcohol counselor who's at the, on the secondary campus, high school, middle school, three days a week from Talbert House. And so immediately, those services, they're tied in, right with the family, with the child. Sometime the family absolutely doesn't want to deal with them, doesn't want to take advantage of those resources. So Rod gets involved, Talbert House and Drug and Alcohol Counselor gets involved, Deb Robinson gets involved, so, you know, because we believe with discipline, a big part of discipline, sometime when you're still going to hammer somebody, you don't want the repetition of this behavior when they return. Plus, they're going to have a little bit of time off, so we want to find a way to try to help them out. So there's a couple of pieces to it. First thing is I'll tell you, if Clancy gets a hit on you, or we suspect you, like you smell of it, or Clancy gets a hit on you and you're not in possession, here's what we do. 10 days, recommendation for expulsion. You got 24 hours to go get a test, a urine test. If you bring that test sample, you bring that back from doctor's office, or lab corps, or whoever, and it's clean, we bring you right back. In some cases, we've had kids say, "Yeah, I was in a car with someone." I've had kids say, "My mom or my dad was while they were driving me to work, to school." And they've come back with a clean test. We've let kids back in, the next day, sometime that day. We've had other kids who we offer, and the communication is to the child and to the parent, who we say, "Go, you know, go get the test." And the parent will say, "No, I know he does drugs, I'm not getting it." Or they just don't, now that they don't get the test, they don't even show up for the expulsion here. So that's the first piece, is that if we don't, if we don't actually catch them in possession, we can't prove they're under the influence, but Clancy gets a hit on them, or the odor, that's the first thing we offer to them. That's the first way you can get out of any kind of punishment, is you go and bring back a negative urine screen. But if I look back at, going back and starting in 12, 13, looking at the different kids here, and if you can kind of see what's in these blocks, this is a breakdown of their discipline. And so, if you see a lot, give you an example. One student had six suspensions prior to this, 23 referrals, four in-school suspensions, six out-of-school suspensions, I mean, pretty heavy discipline here, okay? And I'll do a little research into, you know, what they got going on at home. That kid got 80, because he had a pretty lengthy record of not doing the right thing at school. Another student, very similar, 18 referrals, four suspensions, in-school suspensions, alternative school assignment. And this kid is a repeat, repeat, repeat offender. He got 80. The other kid, no disciplinary infractions the year before, because I do a two-year, look, a two-year snapshot. The year he got, he was caught, he had three referrals, and he had really strong grades, so he got 40 days. So he didn't get the whole eight, because I do it, I start out with, "You're getting 80 days." That's where I start, because we've got to hold a hard line on drugs, possession or use of in our buildings. But then I'm going to look at each case, case by case. I go into, again, the next two pages, these are some bad actors, and they were all 80s. They were major behavioral problems, major suspensions leading up to this. And so, that was in 12, 13. And I go to 13, 14, where we just had two. One was given 45, who's an elementary kiddo. Another kid was given 80, who was the first day of school. So this was his first referral. But, this is a middle school kid, he was 17-years-old, in eighth grade, and bad actor, okay? Did not need to be around our kids. So go into the 15, 16 school year, had two kids that were smoking in the bathroom, and had a whole lot of referrals and suspensions prior to that. They get 80. Another kiddo was given 35. This young lady, at one point, was one of our shining stars, and then had a lot, she started getting in some trouble in school, but also had some significant troubles in her personal life. We got her hooked up with a lot of help from Talbert House, Children's Hospital, psychiatric ward. We've actually placed them with a foster family. We even had a situation, we were giving her clothes, getting her so she could actually, for hygiene, take a shower at the Y, worked through that, through J.D. And she actually got 45, rolled her back to 30 within two weeks, and brought her in on day, brought her back in the school on day 26, because we felt there was some external issues where she was just, had no hope. She said, "Well, what am I doing in life in general?" And really, a lot of the issues went back to some psychiatric issues that I think we, per my knowledge, she's still working on today. Go to the next page, these three kids were chronic fighters, have been arrested, bad actors, 80, 80, and 80. Bad dudes, and they didn't need to be around the rest of our kids. Going into this year, one kiddo, in the first month of school, 11 referrals, five days of suspension, four days of in-school suspension, lunch DTs, after-school DTs, bad news in the district, bad news in the community, 80 days. Another kid, multiple referrals, 80 days. High school kids. Next kiddo, middle school, tried to do the right thing, some significant turmoil in his home, significant turmoil in his home. First referral in two years, but he was in possession, and he was under the influence. We got him, we've gotten him a lot of help, and he was given 30 days. And during that time, he was going to be in treatment, basically, 22 of those 30 days. And so, he's back in school already, and actually helped break up a fight the other day in the cafeteria. So, it always starts out with a 10-day suspension recommendation for expulsion if you're under the influence or in possession of. Then we look at a lot of the factors. And, you know, there's certain things that are non-negotiable. You bring a weapon to school, I don't care if you're the best kid in the school. And because my biggest concern about a weapon, guys, is, wow, I can't predict the future. I don't know whether you're going to use it, but it could fall out of your possession and get into somebody else's hands, could fall in the hallway. Don't have as much of that as we used to. And anymore, what we have is probably, I didn't even know I had it, Mr. Modio, and often it's younger kids, that I didn't know I had it. Or I picked it up on my way to school. Had a couple of kids this year have something in their possession, walk up and give it to the teacher. And they're younger kids, and I, "I didn't know I had this." But typically, anymore, anybody who has a weapon, a pocket knife, and it's, those who absolutely didn't know they had it, who brought it for protection, not here. Not, not going to happen, not here. You can be safe in our school. We get good administrators and a huge cop. You just got, got to talk to us. We used to get a lot more of that, had very little of it. But specifically with the drug and alcohol, everybody is given the opportunity for significant help, significant help, which will include follow-up drug testing through one of the services that we have here, and it's all through Talbert House coordinated by Deb. And we give them the opportunities, because I don't want to see them again for this. Sadly, many of the kids who I have in these lists here, drug abuse is pretty rampant in the house, too. So they're not the only ones using it in the house. And it's not just brothers and sisters, often it's the family members. And so, sometime when you have those, the parents, nobody wants to get involved in trying to get help for their child, because they're not wanting help for themselves. When we, when we know or suspect drug abuse in the home, we turn it over to Rod, and Rod's involved in these the entire time, anyway. He not only will visit the house, but he also communicates to Norwood Police so they're aware when he's not around. On pretty much every one of these cases, Rod will make a home visit, too. Sometime they're not really happy to see him, because it's a big police officer on reports, they don't want to let him in. But in many cases, he's got a little bit of, been able to make a little headway. Of all these kids in here, only one of them is a repeat offender. One kid, for four years in a row, expelled for the same thing. And he would tell me, "I'm bringing it to school, because I'm making money." Yeah. I'm going to bring it to school for the next 80 school days. So, but we take them case by case. In most cases, you could see, there was only a couple there where I said it was less than 80 days, because in many cases, there's a pretty lengthy history of disciplinary issues with the child. But every single one, every family, every child, we provide resources to. And we just don't say, "Here you go, here's a piece of paper." There's calls, and if you guys know Deb, she's a pit bull on this, and the different drug and alcohol counselors we have here, they really go after them. And we try to do a lot of things beforehand, where if we're hearing rumors of, Deb and our alcohol counselor is, can't think of, we have a new one this year, can't think of her name, but they try to get proactive as much as we can, too, because we hear a lot of things. Especially, probably the most we hear is at the middle school, because kids at the high school are a little bit more tight-lipped. But the middle school, you know, you still got kids who are, "I can't believe you're getting involved in this," so they go talk to somebody about it, go see John, Amy, Kathy, their teacher. We try to head it off. I don't want them to have to come to my office for an expulsion here. That's not what I want. If I would go through these, I would probably, if I'd go back and look at my notes, probably 70% of the ones in here, maybe even higher, of the ones who are 80, no one shows up for the expulsion here. So, which is a, when a parent shows up for the expulsion with their child, before I even start the hearing, I thank them for showing up, because at least it shows me that they care, that they're engaged. I will tell you, and I've said this actually for a while, majority of the fams that do not show up for an expulsion hearing have been in our district less than two years. Majority of those who show up have been in here for many, many years. There's a way of doing things as a Norwood family.
Out of curiosity.
Yes.
If somebody gets expelled...
Debbie, they're up in Mark's office.
If they get expelled from our district, can they move to CPS and then get in?
Well, they can move wherever they want, but no public school in the state of Ohio will accept you.
For that term?
For being expelled for that entire time.
Time.
Right.
You have to serve your sentence.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I was curious.
There is a charter school, community school, that will do it, one or two of them. One thing kids will do, and this is for any expulsion, or families will do, because when I expel you, it doesn't kick in until the suspension is over. So I may say you're being expelled, and you may be on day six of the expulsion. being expelled, and you may be on day six of the expulsion. So they'll go and withdraw and go to another district because you're not expelled yet. Well, part of what the letter that they get if they withdraw is, if you return before the 80 school days expire, you're coming back for another hearing because you owe me expulsion days. Because I'm not going to let somebody go somewhere else for three weeks and come back and say, well, you didn't expel me because I withdrew. You're going to owe me those days, whether it's 40, whether it's 70, whether it's 80. And so they'll, they'll get a letter saying that. And so, and then also Kimberly, the Mitch, Michelle knew, they would have a list, and if somebody comes in, they're on that list, they come over and get me, say, Rob, so-and-so's here enrolling, come down and schedule the expulsion hearing. And so, because you can't do that. But there are one or two charter schools that'll let them in. But once you, but if you're under expulsion, if it's kicked in, no school district in the state of Ohio will accept you, no public school district. So. And some school districts, instead of expelling, put kids in alternative school. We don't have that. That's not what Success Academy is, that's not what Conversion School is. And if you're being expelled, you've done some things to forfeit what I say to the kids all the time and the families, is you have a right to attend here, but it's a privilege to stay. And you've lost your privilege to stay in Norwood City Schools. So.
Out of curiosity, is it various substances, or is it just, like, is there a common theme?
It's primarily marijuana or prescription medication. Yep. Of those, none of them have been alcohol. It's been marijuana or prescription drugs. So.
I really appreciate you taking us through that.
No problem.
Because I, I had no idea. And it was, it's good to know that I figured you were doing that, because you are such a caring person, and you care for our kids, that I didn't know, just from the emails, that there was so much more to it than that.
Yeah. And I lean on our building principles, because our, whether it's the principal or assistant principal, because they know the kiddo better than I do. And I can get all the information, but don't come over and meet with me beforehand. And I'll look at them and say, what do you want? Those are my first words to them, what do you want? Because you, I'm starting at 80. I'm at 80 all the time. So tell me what you want. And because they may say, Rob, this kiddo's got to go. Or, you know what, I mean, we've had cases where it's not for alcohol or drugs or weapons, but we've had kids put up for expulsion, and then they'll come in and say, hey, let's bring them back. And then you what's called put on a bench, you get another referral, then you're coming back over here. But listen, what, I mean, don't always agree with them, but majority of the time, I'll defer to them, because they know the kid better than I do. So what do we need here? And sometime when I'm finding out information, whether it's good or bad, it's not what I can find out on our computer, I'm hearing from the administrators. And so, yeah, you guys have recognized some of the names on the list over here. So, who are the 80s? So here's the thing with, with having over 2,000 kids, and to have only, we got nine, 11, 17, 20 in the last four years, it's not, you'd like zero, but that's not, that's not reality. I'm very calm, you know, here's what I know. Kids are still getting, getting stuff into school, I'd imagine. Kids are still hiding, being under the influence from us. I'm just, I'm not going to say we get every single person, but we're getting them. We're getting a lot more, because our staff has a little bit better training. We have Rod there, our administrators are on the ball with it, and Clancy's a big help. Clancy's a huge deterrent, big deterrent. To give you how good he is, every Wednesday, he and Rod have to go to training, and Clancy outperforms the DEA dogs from the airport. And we had a situation, and it's a, it's minus the name, it's a public record, so I didn't say it on tape. We had a student who brought it hidden into a socket, and it was a three-quarter inch socket, actually. And so we caught him. Clancy and Rod went into the, went into a classroom and doing some interactive stuff with the kids, and Clancy all of a sudden, so we got him. And so before Rod could take this up to the county, in the evidence locker, it was in a drawer in Joe Miller's office for maybe half hour. And then Rod sealed it in an evidence envelope, went and put it in his car. While Rod was out the car, Clancy was still running around the building. He comes running right into Miller's office, wham, ramrod straight. And it wasn't even in Joe's office, it was in his top drawer for maybe 20, 30 minutes. And so it was, it's pretty impressive. I didn't see about it, but everybody at the high school had fun with Miller on that. So, and Joe, the next day, Joe's in wiping out his desk, I can't have him coming in here every day staring at my drawer. And so Joe was all freaked out about it. So, but, and then we checked the cars and lockers every week. And so the, the big thing is our kids know. If they want to roll the, you know, roll the dice and take the risk, we're going to get them. Maybe not the first time, but we'll get them. Compared to without having Clancy, it's not that. Because when we ran the dogs once every six weeks, here's one day, I guarantee kids are bringing stuff in, the day after we ran the dogs. Because you know you can't bring the dogs in two days in a row, because we'd have to borrow them from the county, from the airport, and the day we were going to have them. Oh, we got a intel, there's a big shipment coming at the airport, so the airport dogs were there, the county dogs were going. So having our own guy, it's good. It's good. And if you've been around Clancy, he's, he'd never sit still. And he is the brains of the operation. Might tell Officer Housley that all the time. So.
Well, I appreciate you going over that, too. And I, I appreciate the fact that it's not all black and white. I just wanted to make sure that we were looking at the whole picture instead of just, this is the rules.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's family.
It starts out at black and white. I start out at 80, and then I got to learn about kids.
Yeah. And I, I appreciate that.
No problem. It's what you pay me doing. So, no problem. All right. Now we'll work down the agenda. Okay, so coming into next week, we'll have the approval of the calendar. What I always do is the next day, then I put out an email to the staff with this as an attachment. And then you got the January board meeting dates, organizational committee and regular board meeting. I think for organizational committee, we've done like one starting at 5/3 and the other immediately following. So we'll have to figure out who are, who's the president and vice president all for next year. We've got a gear up trip for the middle school, going up to Wright State, flipping over to employment. If you remember, every year, we do a one-year contract with Tradesman Local 392, that's with Timmy Bloom. And guys, Timmy's salary and benefits is just a little bit, talking total cost of employment is a little bit below $100,000. That's not what his take-home is, but, and we were paying about $350,000 to $400,000 a year to Geiler to do this work. And so now we pay Timmy to do it. So it's a significant savings, and he does a lot other than just paying. We've got three educational aides. And then, let's see, we had two classified subs. And then coming down to our coaches, this is, this is everybody who's agenda-ready for winter sports. Remember, agenda-ready means we've got everything back from ODE on you. Now, that, there'll be some more people on there, because they've taken their people activity or CPR, as soon as it's, we get an email saying that they're ready. So there'll be more on there. And then going to, let me do want to bring one, one point, because you may have questions. If you look at wrestling, we got all these people listed as a reserve coach. What we're doing this year is, is the assistants are going to be seven through 12 assistants. We have so many doggone wrestlers this year. We anticipate about 50 middle school kids, and we will have a full reserve and varsity squad at the high school. And so we got a lot of talent on our wrestling staff, including we have a guy who's a volunteer, who's an Olympic qualifier. And so we got a lot of talent in that room. So we want to have all the coaches working with all the kids, even though they're in two different rooms, they're going to be switching around, moving all around. And we're going to have more matches, because we'll have two middle school teams this year. And then we're going to have two high school teams, a full varsity schedule, full reserve schedule. We could be three deep at most of our weight classes at the high school. And then we got a million kids at the middle school. And so, so what we did is everybody, this is costing us about $500 more, because instead of two reserve coaches and two junior high coaches, we're calling everybody reserve, but we're not filling the junior high, the middle school, the seventh and eighth grade position. But if, what I've always said from back in 2009, when we reduced about $40,000 in our supplementals, I've always said, if you get the numbers, you get the positions back. You know, because our contract doesn't say how many, it just says, here's the pay for that. You have the numbers, we'll, we'll give the positions, because that's what we're here for, provide the tools and the resources to succeed. So that's what we're doing here. And that is one of the better high school wrestling staffs around. Yeah, we got one name who's, let's see, we got everybody on there? Yeah, we got everybody on there. So. And then we go to the next page, this is just more supplementals, elementary productions. We got six, two for each building, one scenery and one musical coordinator. And we have technology coordinators, remember that's when we started two years ago. And they are, once we put in the Chromebooks, we couldn't rely on just our three district techs. So these guys are kind of the experts of how to use the instructional technology in the classroom, they're not the break fix folks. And that's for each building. We have three avenues for success. Got change of status on one educational aid, two student assisted, those are different jobs, different pay scales. Then a change of Robert Brewer from mentor to mentor specialist. Then, as usual, I figured you guys, even though I could read every single one of them to you, I don't think you want me to. We got the stack of 17 policy updates, some of them is a paragraph, some of them, a word or two, but we've got 17 updates. And then we've got one approval facility usage. And then we've got the under finance committee approval financial report, approval of resolution, given authorization to file modified tax budget, resolution, request in advance of property tax from the county, and then approval of the tax rates.
Can we make sure the middle school floor is protected?
The gym floor?
Yeah.
We're going to put that big tarp down. Yeah. Yeah. Speaking of floors, this floor is, is rocking. View's next. And then over Christmas, the cafeteria floor at the high school will be done. So we'll have a big chunk in. And been working on the, I cannot tell you how much easier it would have been to just replace the art room floor at View. But once insurance got in, the amount of stuff remediation and testing and infrared testing, where we could have gone in ourselves and torn it out and done it, like in a weekend. But once insurance was on the job, and they had layers of people in, there's testing on a wooden floor that I didn't think were possible, the amount of things. Insurance paid for it, but just look, I mean, infrared testing and hotspot testing and all on the, get a shovel and scrape it out, put a VCT floor down, that's pretty, that's pretty, tear the carpet up, put it back down, we did in our basement. So just, yeah, so it's been pretty intricate. But, but View's floor is next, and we'll no longer have that really grimy, gross rubber floor, because water go underneath it. And so get a good wooden floor in there. So we got a really neat, I'll email you the, the design, got to go in mid-court here. It's kind of a, a W on action with like a claw going through it, a little similar to like the UC. And it's really neat. And that's what, we can put on anything we want. So Mark spent some time, got some input, and he says he did it. I guarantee Mark didn't do it. But it looks really good. It looks really neat. I'll have to email it to you. So it looks real good. So that's moving on. And weather's cooperating, because we haven't been able to, we haven't had to have inside gym class, but maybe two or three times this entire school year. And it's, what, November 8th? So. That's all the items I have.
All right, any other, any other topics?
All right, we will adjourn at 6:13.